I've got one too.
Hey Jake. When you're doing the last. Sure. I just want to ask him on that, but other than that.
All right.
On this, I want to see if the way I worded it is okay. And other than that, it's mostly accept place on file. Then like the convention, these, this last two pages is just conventions.
Right. Believe it or not.
If that, if someone makes an issue.
Alright.
That's how it would be. That's my question.
So that'll be if they decide that they're. Just.
Ready?
I'll give this to you.
Okay. She's, calm down.
Is, do you need this packet?
If you'd please rise to honor our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mr. Gignak?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin? Six sheyes, one absent. Six present, one absent.
Thank you. We have minutes, approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, February 6th, 2013. Moved to accept, so moved by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Mr. Gignak, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, so voted. Next we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Tufts Medical Center Incorporated for $10,995 to provide testing for various special needs students who are hospitalized. Funding provided by Special Education Department Budget, hospitalized children. To JSC Transportation Services Incorporated for $15,525 to provide round trip transportation for two homeless students per the McKinney-Vento Act to and from Lowell to Burlington High School in Burlington, Massachusetts. Funding will be provided by the Lowell School Department Transportation Budget. To Christensen Bus Company LLC in the amount of $11,700 to provide round trip transportation for two homeless students per the McKinney-Vento Act to and from Lowell to Marshall Middle School and Dutil Elementary Schools in Billwrecka, Massachusetts. Funding provided by the Lowell School Department Transportation Budget. To Boston Symphony Orchestra in the amount of $16,000 to provide admission for Lowell Public School's sixth grade students to attend the Boston Symphony Orchestra Youth Concerts on March 6th and 8th in Boston, Massachusetts. Funding provided by the Lowell School Department in strength and music budget.
Thank you. What is the wish of the committee? Ms. Ross Sikowitz.
I just have a question with regard to the transportation costs for the homeless children. Are those costs being shared by the receiving districts?
It is common practice that we share the costs as much as we possibly can within the regulations. As, as much as we do, we, we share the costs.
So are these costs reflective of transportation for these individual students for the remainder of the school year?
I believe so. At this particular point, those would be for those two students to continue up through the end of the year.
Okay.
Any further discussion? What's the wish of the committee? Moved for approval by Mr. Gignak, seconded by Ms. Scott. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignak?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Six sheyes, one present.
Next we have memorials. Walter J. McInerney, Uncle Lowell High School teacher, Susan Silk. Gilbert Price, a former Robinson School teacher. Ellen L. Martin, sister of former city councillor Larry Martin, retired teacher Mary Sayer. Art of School Committee member Connie Martin. Lincoln School paraprofessional Margaret Grug. Riley Teacher Maureen Sayer. And LHS custodian Alan Sayer. If you please rise in a moment of silence and darken chambers. May they rest in peace. Under unfinished business, we have before and after school programs use of revenue. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our meeting, past meeting, we looked at, we were asked to provide more information about the accounts that were held under the before and after school program and the use of that revenue. Mr. Lang has provided for you a recommendation and the balances in those particular areas. And since he has provided this report, I will ask him to guide us through it.
Thank you. Yeah, this is just a continuation of our discussion from the last school committee meeting. I had put, just so the information was all together, there was a memo dating back to November. And then a follow-up report from the last school committee meeting. I just attached them all to the cover sheet. But if it's the committee's intent after our discussion last week to continue with this practice, I basically have outlined the, the vote below for the appropriation transfer. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any discussion? Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lang. Do you know if the student activity accounts at those schools are used to purchase technology?
Off the top of my head, I don't. It would have to be some kind of a justification going towards student use. But it's, I don't know off the top of my head. They'd be permissible to anything that falls onto student activities.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
Can I ask, and I apologize for having missed the last meeting, so what is, what is the actual vote that we're being asked? It just says use of revenue. What is it that we're going to be asked to vote on tonight?
Mr. Lang?
Thank you. So basically, what you're, you're being asked to vote on is to transfer a total of sixty-two, I'm sorry, $66,200 from the capital improvements line item within the local budget. Because the, under the maintenance, the facilities maintenance department, they will now be able to access the use of facility revolving fund that will have $66,200 in it from the revenue that's derived from these programs. So basically, you're transferring within your operating budget, the $66,200 in capital to new accounts that are going to be set up under the student activities. I believe it's the 3,500 series in your budget book. So that each school can access, five of them are $10,000 because they're year-round rentals. And two of them, because they're only 10-month rentals, are $8,100. But basically, it's the Bailey, Lincoln, McAuliffe, Merklin, and Matuckett would each have a student activity line item for $10,000 established within the local budget. And the Riley and the Stocklosa would each have a new line item established for student activities of $8,100 that they could then access to pay for their student activities.
So basically, this is just taking these funds, putting them in the regular line item budget. And the schools that are participating in these programs would have exclusive right to draw down those funds?
Correct. I'd be setting up an account specifically, say, at the Stocklosa school. That would have a Stocklosa account number on it. And that school would be able to access their $8,100 for the, the use of the after-school program.
And we'd still have the same criteria in effect, that it would have to be stated what the use was and?
Oh, yes. They still have to follow the same guidelines for use of student activity funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Gignak? I make a motion to approve the recommended transfer. Motion by Mr. Gignak to transfer the $66,200 to the schools involved from the capital improvements account. Seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignak?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Six sheyes, one nay, approved.
Thank you. Next we have, under motions, the first motion by myself, so if Mr. Conway would take the chair.
Motion by Mayor Patrick Murphy and Robert Gignak requests that the superintendent work with city administration, business community, and others to develop a school innovation grant program to fund teacher and staff-driven educational programs and projects. No second is needed on the motion. Mayor Patrick Murphy on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the city side of things, we have a program that was just recently implemented in the last year or two called the Neighborhood Innovation Grant Program. Where a number of smaller projects were funded through some, some, a pool of, of grant money to encourage not only innovation within the neighborhoods, but more collaboration between, whether it's neighborhood groups or, or nonprofits and, and that sort of thing. In a number of cases, people have wanted to work with the schools and have in fact worked with the schools. I think there are projects that, you know, are in the works now to create some community gardens at the, at the schools and, and some other projects. But this is really to create some type, type of fund, working with the city administration, but also finding some money through the school administration and, and perhaps even private donations to work to support, you know, programs and projects that are, are actually driven by the teachers themselves from within the school. Because I think that would then focus those type of programs on the educational outcomes and what happens during the school day. So this is really just a simple motion to look into whether or not we can, can work to establish a kind of program like that and, and see whether it can be put into effect so that teachers are actually given some opportunity to develop after-school programs, before-school programs, and, and the like that would affect, you know, educational outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Murphy. Ms. Martin on the motion?
Thank you very much. I certainly think that this is a great idea. It's, it's something that I think has fallen by the wayside in the, in our district. You know, we had had many grant programs in the past. And with funding cuts, they became more and more difficult to, to maintain. I do think that this, you know, I'll certainly support the motion. It would, I think, fold in very nicely with the work that's going on with the Greater Lowell Community Foundation and trying to get that grant position in place, the development position in place. It would be great as a sideline if we could get an update on the status of that right now. Because that's exactly the kind of effort where if we could develop the criteria around what a school innovation program could be, you know, loose criteria, that would, you know, give teachers some kind of shape of what they could, you know, apply for, basically an RFP. That we could develop that as a program that could then, this individual, this development person, would be able to really solicit those funds specifically for this innovation project. And it would give us an opportunity. I think that's something that funders would find particularly compelling. And I think it absolutely draws on the best that we have in our district and gives teachers an opportunity to try new things, to be creative. And I think that that could be a way to, to get the seed money to get this started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any, any more discussion on the motion? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted. Thank you. Next motion by Kristen Ross Sikowitz requests the superintendent provide an update as to the incorporation of training and services provided by the home-based program in support of military families in the school district, seconded by Ms. Scott. Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, the motion really speaks for itself. A while back, I had put a motion on the floor and my colleagues had, had consented to entertain the use of the home-based program, which is an organization out of Boston that works in coordination with Spalding Rehab and Mass General Hospital to provide home-based supports for military members and their family, and their family, and in particular their children. And so I, I hadn't, we hadn't seen really an update. I know that Assistant Superintendent Murphy was working on this issue and rolling this out. I, I can say that in my tour of the schools back in December, the Stocklosa school actually has a, a component on their student information sheet that the parents would fill out at the beginning of the year. There actually is a, a piece in their form that asks parents to identify if there are service members within the household. And, and they actually use that information. And I saw that in their Veterans Day display. You know, they had actually, you know, when identifying these students who had parents, brothers, sisters, whoever, who were in the military, they actually took these children's photos and, you know, and, and created a flag using their photos as stars. And I thought it was just a wonderful tribute to the, to the challenges that these families experience. So I, I was just curious as to an update and how, you know, if we're moving along so that we're identifying those families across the district to ensure that we're building in the supports that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next we have subcommittees. The Finance Subcommittee, approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, February 4th, 2013.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gignak. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next we have the Technology Subcommittee, approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, February 4th, 2013. Motion to approve by Ms., oh, excuse me, Ms. Scott?
Now, these were reported at the last minute, meeting, too, so just submit them as a report of progress. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next we have the Joint Facilities Subcommittee with the City Council, approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, February 6th, 2013.
We actually didn't like go over it, but just, I can do it in two minutes. Really, we went over the, the work issues that we're still working on and the numbers. And we're also planning to get together with the City Council Facility Subcommittee in March and do a tour of three schools and get an update on the work orders. So I put that as a, a motion to approve the minutes of, of that meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Reports of the superintendent. First report is the Knowledge Bowl 2013. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is your annual update on the beginning of the Knowledge Bowl season. Our young people in middle schools are getting prepared for the competition that will start the first week of March for the preliminary rounds. And then the elimination rounds will be the following, March 11th and March 12th. Our semifinals will be on March 18th and 19th, and the final date is March 21st. This is always an open invitation for any of committee members to serve as judges if you haven't already been approached. And just to let you know, the names of the coaches, I have included them in the report. And if you're going to be judged, we just need you to be there a little early. And we look forward to this competition. It is great fun to watch our students compete and, and show how very smart they are.
Thank you. Any discussion on this report? Say no motion to accept this report of progress, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikowitz. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next report, response to the motion of February 6th, 2013 by Mr. Gignak and Mr. Leary. Request the super, request the committee formally oppose the MIAA's decision to no longer recognize boys' gymnastics as a sanctioned high school sport. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, upon learning that the boy, the gymnastics was not going to continue as a recognized sport, the committee had concerns about that. And so I did follow up with a formal letter. I wanted to provide that to you all. I have not received response. As if correspondence comes back, I will keep you informed. But I just wanted to formally revisit it and ask if there are any questions, concerns, or comments.
Any discussion? Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When, when was that letter sent out?
The day after the meeting, Mr. Conway. Whenever.
So in, in a matter of, in a couple of weeks, we haven't had any response at all from the MIAA?
It went out last Thursday, February 14th.
Yeah, is there, is there something else? I mean, if we sat down with, with the Athletic Department or the Athletic Director, is there anything else that we potentially can do here? Is there any way that they could be called a, called a meeting and discuss this in open?
I will ask for more guidance from Mr. Profio. I did not call a formal meeting. If you want to go further, I can ask what the procedure is to approach officials from the MIAA. But to be honest with you, I, I don't, I'm not aware of it, so I can look into it.
I mean, I, I think the motion, I think the motion is, certainly is, is extremely important. And I'm certainly glad that my colleagues put this on. You know, obviously, it's a sport that a number of, of students are involved with. It's something that, it's an activity that they happen to carve out that is important to them. Not just at Lowell High School, but a number of other schools, too. And, and I realize that there are obviously some complications, but I, I would think the MIAA could work out those complications and, and make it work for these, for these schools that have this, have this particular sport. I, I would like you, if, if at all possible, to, to meet with the Athletic Director and, and see what else can be done besides just sending a letter. Thank you.
Mr. Gignak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Mr. Conway brings up a good point that we do need to figure out something in the short term while we wait for a response. So I would make a motion to refer this report to the Athletic Subcommittee where we can discuss this with the Athletic Director, who I believe sits on the Gymnastics Committee for the MIAA. So I think we'll be able to get more information then.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gignak, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Thank you. Next we have the Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, the next year reports are also on the Curriculum Subcommittee, so we can go into them in more detail. Because the first report is the Annual, Annual Measurable Assessment Outcomes for English Language Learners. And so it shows our progress over time. And it indicates, if you, you look at the report and the charts follow, the first chart is the Lowell data. And so we have not made progress. We're two percentage points behind the district making the attainment piece in progress in learning of the English language. By the percentage, we need to, to, to improve this particular year. We did meet the progress of the attainment of English proficiency. So that means the level of proficiency for the children in the higher level, they did make enough progress to meet the, the guidelines of the state set for us. And in the last one, the progress in the MCAS results for English Language Learners did not make the amount of progress we had to make in the content areas across the system. So this is the annual, annual data we have. We do write a letter to parents. There's a letter from new superintendent explaining what this means. But it also makes us look at the services we provide, the comprehensive growth of English Language Learners in the attainment of English, so focusing on that. And this goes, goes hand in hand with, the next report is from the Coordinated Program Review, which talks about the areas where we need to improve and upgrade. All of these I'm putting out this evening, and we can have further discussion tomorrow at the Subcommittee Meeting for Curriculum, because there are, there are true budget implications and there will be a recommendation around the budget to talk about the support systems that need to take place. If there are any questions at this particular point, I would entertain anything you might want to know.
Thank you very much. And just a quick one, because I know we'll be talking about it tomorrow night. But just as I'm looking at the Lowell District information, I mean, when you look at the history, it seems remarkably consistent. So there's obviously something happening, you know, specifically in that attainment area that, I'm sorry, that's working. I mean, so there's that. But the progress in the, the other PPI stuff, we're not, we haven't found the secret to it yet. So I, I think as we're talking about this tomorrow night, it would be great to hear what changes we're planning to kind of really get at those two areas that, you know, historically, we just have not been able to, to match.
Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, the, the actual direct services to students is something that was found, and we'll talk about that. But breaking down that data is very important. And for as much as we do include the data about limited English proficiency students readily, we know the proficiency level of children, it's included in everything. We have to go to the underpinnings, to the reason why, to that root cause piece, to say, over time, that's not good enough. So I absolutely, with, as with all data for all children, take it very seriously. So that's what we're looking to do through the process, get to the why. What is the reason why we consistently have not made that progress? And we're talking over, you know, a few years, so.
Is this something, will we be kind of incorporating this into the, the summer program? That's so wildly exciting, so.
Yes, and I believe, Ms. Martin, that the governors, the governor and his guidance and all of the money that was put forward through the Gateway Cities Initiative looked at LEP data over time. And, you know, from someone who's been in the field, says, you have the same data for decades. And it's, you know, it's not okay. And we do the best we can. But when your best isn't good enough for whole generations of young people, seriously, it says, what in fact? So the fact that the governor spent the largest proportion of that money in his advisors and all of the mayors and, and urban superintendents that came together collectively, the fact that we all said something more has to be done. It's almost unheard of to say, you're going to mandate a full-day program. They told us had to be a full day. Had to put acculturation, really, that I'm very excited about that. We have to put some fun, some learning for children that is, that is diversion. But we have to really plan it in a very meaningful way. And not just look at those newcomers. You know, newcomers actually are the easiest ones that show growth, because that happens overnight. It's the children who have been with us that really need that academic language piece. And that is the reason why. You get something like $325,000, district like Lowell came easily. So what happens, experiential learning for young people is extremely important. So that is definitely connected, saying, we know we're not doing well enough. And if you look at the national data, subgroup-wise, for many years, it's not good. And so that all goes together. Ms. Martin, yes, thank you.
Further discussion? Entertaining then a motion to accept the report as a report of progress, so moved by Mr. Gignak, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next mo, next report, the English learner that I should participate in. Education Coordinated Program Review and Annual Measurable Achievement Objectives Report. Madam Superintendent?
This, we had had a total of, as Ms. Ann Murphy, who oversees parts of this, this is under the area of, of curriculum. But this was a very unorganized Coordinated Program Review. So it's kind of come back at you in, in small doses, but it actually gives us time to focus. For me personally, it's probably like my sixth that you looked at. And when the Department of Education looks at the federal guidelines and the state law, Chapter 71A, they go through how in fact you're able to perform. And so in our area, we have. And so in our area, we have here all the criteria where we have implemented or partially implemented. I will tell you, the good news is that we, there is not one area where we have total noncompliance, where we have to do something emergency. Either it's partially implemented or implemented. And so I'm going to actually go through the findings and some of the recommendations, the early recommendations. I believe tomorrow evening, there'll be more staff on board. So if you come with any questions that you want to know, we'll be able to process them tomorrow evening. But it's broken down in assessment, identification and placement, parent involvement, curriculum and instruction, student support services, staffing, facilities, and evaluation of the program, as well as record keeping. So those are the areas that they study when they do the coordinated program reviews in the cycle. In the area of assessment of student progress, are we doing what we need to do? We have implemented the annual assessments, we follow all the guidelines, we come within the requirements in those particular areas. So we don't have to do, have any kind of improvement type of pieces in those particular areas. In the area of student identification and placement, we do have to look at the initial identification. And so I'm going to just say the finding and what the recommendation is together to kind of keep us in the same area. If you look at the explanation, the district response under initial identification, what needs to happen, if the initial information isn't up to speed, there has to be a retraining at Parent Information Center because that, in fact, it has to be put right into X2. And for whatever reason, when they do these reviews, they take random sampling. And so they pull files and they take a random sampling, and they found there wasn't consistency. We will relook at that in the Family Resource Center and make sure that we inform the schools in a better fashion, because that was one of the findings. The second area was the waiver procedures, which we're fine, we don't have to respond to that. Again, in the student identification and placement, there is a placement and a structure. We have a program. We know we have different schools that receive children with different support systems. There is a partial implementation. And when you look at what the district will say, this is in ELE 5, they, we have program models that follow regulations, but in every single case, they found that the mandated service, two and a half hours minimally to a full day of service, is not always able to be delivered. And that comes to staffing. And so we have to look at the staffing and the support systems that we have in that particular place. The next finding that we really need to look at was ELE program placement and structure. So again, looking at that response, do we have enough space for the children? Do we have the support systems? The department is relooking at the support to make sure we have that, and that's something we have to review as a district. As we look at the exit and the readiness, we have program review, there's a process when a child becomes ready for review to leave an ELE program. It's called, you have LEP, well, FLEP. It's former LEP, okay? So it's not anything really fancy, but you have to go through a review process. And here's the issue. According to the regulations, you're supposed to follow that child for two years beyond, and you follow the assessment piece, but sometimes the services, two years beyond, especially if they're proficient in MCAS, that you have to be proficient in MCAS and you have to be making, able to perform ordinary classroom in English to be FLEP. And so it's that two-year beyond that I know is a finding, I have to tell you, that that's like the AMOS. It's a finding that you find most every time, unfortunately, because it's still offering that support. But the federal government knows that kids need support with cognitive language for a good long time. So that's the issue in that particular area. Then we get into parent involvement. We do have partially implemented parent involvement. I will tell you that we translate many documents. There is a big folder of documentation, but they have told us that we could do better, we could do more. So looking at more liaisons that speak the languages at a part-time basis, that's the area where, in fact, we need some assistance. We, like I said, we do a number of translations, but according to the findings, interviews and whatnot, it was found that we need some more support in that particular area. When we get into the area of curriculum and instruction, declining entry into a program, we don't have a problem with that particular piece. Instructional grouping, again, in low public schools, you all know that the core instruction in literacy and mathematics across the system has to do with core lesson and then either enrichment, intervention, modification. And so we try and do that through tutoring, through extra services, and, but they say when you go across the district, it wasn't consistency of practice in every single case. And so that's something we need to look at. And for our per capita, we're probably, I think we're the second highest district LEP ratio that comes with direct teaching and support. So that's another area we have to work on. Parent notification, again, in the languages, that's something that is a challenge. When you get into student support services, equal access to academic program and services, excuse me, the district response in that particular area is going to look at the Resource Center, make sure the parents are informed of the student entry, initial placement. There's supposed to be a 10-day letter that makes sure people are informed of that. That's what happens. They do have an option to waiver and whatnot, but I believe that when they look, went through all the paperwork piece, and I know this is dry and boring, but they didn't find compliance on every single area. So that's in that particular piece. When you get into the non-academic program and extracurricular programs, we're doing well at that. We don't need to respond because we do have the access issue handled. When you look at follow-up support, again, getting into the, every single time, you're going to look, and you're looking at teachers, do we do the follow-up piece that we need to? And obviously, it didn't come out consistently, so that's part of it. Getting into faculty and staff, licensure requirements, although our licensure is good, if you have any waivers in a district like Lowell, it does fall in the area of ESL in many cases. So I would think in the highly qualified piece, we have waivers in that particular area, and we move towards the piece of waivers getting better. So the licensure piece. Also, we have had the opportunity, as far as licensure requirement, we're involved in two particular initiatives, one through Fitchburg State, which has classes that are covered for our staff, and we have a number of people who are taking those courses. We also have enrolled many teachers, up to, we're going to train 200 to 300 teachers in the next two years in the retail piece. But we are not consistently, so they have to look at the data in those particular areas. And so when we get to facilities, there's equity facilities, we have implemented equity facilities, so the equity piece is well done. And then program implementation, do we evaluate our program? Yes, that was found that we have implemented that. And again, record keeping. So in the area of looking at our records, looking at the pieces that they pulled, there may have been some information. So our recommendation is to have a more careful look. We have ESLD teachers in every single building, they, who look at records, and so the coordinator of ELE is looking at the procedural pieces. The work boils down to this. We need to make sure that the support systems are in place, which will feed, how we began this discussion, and the AMOS, which will provide more, better outcomes for young people. So this is a lot of information. Tomorrow evening, we'll have more time to discuss it, but I did want to put these two reports together because one, most assuredly, has to do with the other. And within our planning, we will be looking at support systems for children who speak English as a second language and what we need to discuss as far as budgetary responses. So with that, I put that out there. If people have any questions, specifically, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Leary.
Just quick, this report is pretty generic. Can we get exactly what locations, what schools were not doing specifically well? Because as you get into budgetary process, when we begin these discussions, that'd be, I think, helpful to the overall discussion. Having it generically, we're partially, you know, effective, whatever the vernacular you're using, is nice, but what schools are we not doing what we're supposed to be doing? And let's find out why they're not doing it. Is it a staffing issue, or is it a management issue that they need to do their job? That's what we need to differentiate as we get into any type of staffing discussions. Thank you.
Any, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Yes, the, in looking at the data of how the schools are doing independently as far as meeting the guidelines, we'll be able to look at that as part of the data. It doesn't come back as part of the state report, but as us looking at who needs the support, who's not making the gains with that particular subgroup, that's most definitely where we need to put the resources. It's very easy for a district to say, oh, yeah, I need a new ESL teacher at every grade level. Well, and so, you know, there's three million. But in sincerity, you have to really look at who's doing the job more, very effectively, depending on the population, and what is, what are the strategies that are working most effectively? So you're right, Mr. Leary, breaking that down by building for need as part of the budget process is part of the work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Entertained a motion to accept this report of progress, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Ross Sikwicz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Next, we have convention and conference requests. Entertained a motion to take all nine together, so moved by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So voted. Entertained a motion to approve, so moved by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikwicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn, so moved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gignac. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned.